I'm going to call this meeting to order on December 8, 2020.
Hello, can you hear me?
Oh, and there's Commissioner Watkins.
We can hear you.
Great, just in time.
You, but you're frozen.
There we can hear you. Yes, we can.
Hello.
Hello.
You can't. Okay, wonderful. Okay.
Yeah, we're going to give it a try, Commissioner Watkins. I think Mr. Chino is going to call you and try to do some resetting with your internet to maybe help out. I think you're frozen again, unfortunately, but we do have a quorum tonight, so we will let Mr. Chino work with Commissioner Watkins to see if they can get the internet working a little bit better. But we'll move into the the meeting tonight. I'm going to ask the city clerk to call roll, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Present.
Commissioner McElroy?
Present.
Commissioner Watkins? Commissioner Wilson?
Present.
Mayor Harless?
Present. And Commissioner McElroy, would you lead us in an invocation, please?
Yes, let's pray. Our dear heavenly Father, we come to you in the midst of a most unusual holiday season, one we have never experienced before, never anticipated, and we come with hearts that need you. We need, we bring to you discerning hearts, and we pray that you would give us wisdom as we make decisions about our city. We pray you would speak into our hearts and help us to know the very, very best thing for all the citizens. We also pray for caring hearts, Father. We have many that are suffering in their in our city, whether it be from lack of the ability to work, even though they're able, to those that are filling our hospitals and are at home ill. We pray for answers to both of these problems, that people may be able to get back to work, that people will be healed. We pray for our doctors, our healthcare teams, that they would be able to make a difference in these people's lives and return them to good health. And we also help ask for help for our educators as they try to take care of children in very different innovative ways. Just bless them, Father. We ask for trusting hearts, to know that you are sovereign and in control, and that you will work this out as we lean into you. And then, Father, we do ask for joyful hearts, even in the midst of difficulty, that we can remember that you are the Savior of the world who came into this world at Christmas time. Bless us with a good meaning, give us love and kindness and respect for one another, and we ask all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. And Commissioner Abraham, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight, please?
I will. Countdown from three, two, one, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City manager, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda tonight?
No, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. We're going to start off with a presentation from our city engineer on the Build Grant Environmental Assessment, and I will turn it over to you, Mr. Murphy. Mr. Murphy, are you there?
I'm here. I'm just waiting for them to bring the video up or the PowerPoint up.
All right. Lindsay, do you happen to have that? I think maybe Mr. Chino is helping Commissioner Watkins.
I've got it. I'm cuing it up.
Hello, you're multitasking. That's impressive.
I got you. Just a second. All right, how's that?
Start with the first slide where you're down into the.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. No problem.
Okay. Okay, yeah. Okay, Mayor Commission, City Manager, and those of the viewing public, welcome to our meeting or this presentation. What we have tonight show you is where we are in the Bill Grant process for the Riverboat Landing public comments and environmental assessment process. Our professional teams have been working, collecting data.
Sorry.
On on this project. Let's move to the next slide, please.
Mr. Chino, you're not muted, just so you know.
What we want to show you all is the Build Grant footprint and all of its, I guess, amenities and improvements. Some of the improvements are further along than others, and some of the improvements are yet to come. But this shows an entire boundary of the Build Grant. It shows some more riverfront park development, excursion boat landing for this, and our teams are doing research for this. But what next slide, please. Shows you the area that is impacted. That's not the entire area, but it kind of gives you an idea of the existing riverfront that will be part of the program. Next slide, please. This shows you an indication of some concepts of what may be built, and within that footprint for that, as far as excursion boat landing. Next slide, please. Just gives you an aerial view of that area. Now, the area off into, I guess, I'll call it the northern northwest portion of the screen shows you trees and stuff. We just didn't work the parking lot in there. That's the downtown parking lot for that, but it kind of gives you some idea of where that's at. That opening there is where normally the band sets up for barbecue on the river to give you some location. Next slide, please. And what we're needing is we're needing public comments for the project associated with anything that anybody may have a concern for any biological concern or archaeological concern within that footprint. We're not asking for anything to comment on the design. We don't have a design. We have a concept, and we're just asking if anybody knows anything about in the history of the ground or something that we may need to research to finalize our environmental document. Next slide. So what we want to hear from the public on the concepts of the environmental assessment, and you can send or respond to that website. It's paducahky.gov/BillGrant-2019. You can respond at that location, or you can complete the comment form and timing now through January. Can also be commented by sending an email to billgrant@paducahky.gov. We look forward to receiving any comments for that. Next slide, please. The environmental assessment, Bill Grant Project Team is recommending a de minimis 4F determination on Schultz Park and the Bill Grant Project area, which means that the project improvements are not adversely affecting the activities, features, and attributes that qualify Schultz Park for the protection under the 4F program of the Department of Transportation Act. After public comments from the city, after public comments, the city of Paducah and MIRAD, that that's our granting authority to obtain a formal concurrence on this de minimis determination. It's just it's just part of this process. Next slide, please. So where are we? You see now through January to the far left, that's where we are in the process. And then, where as we proceed across this timeline, there's four. We got Preparation Environmental Assessment, Submental to the Government Grant Agencies, Agency Review, and Final Submental, looking for April or early May of 2021. So we're over here now through January 21. These are our steps we need to complete to get get to the final submittal. So your help would be greatly needed for your comments. Next slide. Thank you very much. That is that is the extent of this presentation. We're just looking for public comments to this process.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sure you can predict it. So do we have to wait? Do you have to wait till May to start doing the design work?
Actually, we have, Mayor, we have to fulfill this process to complete. We have to close the entire environmental process before we can even advertise for the design. MIRAD was of the opinion that we already had the design, the environmental process complete. We're like, no, we needed to. We needed to make sure we because we're spending about $250,000 on this entire process, so we wouldn't want to guess it's something. So no, we have to complete this process prior to engaging in design.
Okay. The fee that you're talking about, that $250,000, is does that come out of the Build Grant money that we either got from the federal government or what the city had set aside is our match?
No, no, it does not. The Bill Grant does not pay for the environmental review. That's something that we have to pay for. Now, we have, we have money to pay for that. However, it doesn't count as our match.
Oh, okay. But we did have money set aside for that.
Yes, we do. But the design fee, the design fee will count toward the Bill Grant, but not the environmental.
So the public comments that you're needing now are more about the environmental assessment. It's not about the design. I mean, there's I know that's very specific what we can and can't do according to the Build Grant regulations.
Correct. Again, we have to show concepts, concepts to indicate a footprint, and then, as somebody may see that, and they may say, well, maybe there was a maybe an endangered species that might have been there or something like a bat or something. They may write in and say, hey, I think that there may be an endangered species there. Okay, we just got to make sure that we cover that concern, or maybe there was like an archaeological site or something that may be buried there. Like, I'm just being facetious, but it is like a dinosaur bone. We don't have dinosaur bones around here. We just have to prove that we did the investigation on those different items as part of the environmental process. So other than our professional history and knowledge and those that represent us, we're looking for the general public's concern and or knowledge that they may have input on to make comment, too.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Murphy or comments? No? Okay. All right. Thank you so much. We're going to move into the business and the consent agenda. Items on this consent agenda are considered to be routine by the Board of Commissioners and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member requests. I know I have one item I would like to remove tonight, and that is the CVB Marketing Campaign Services item H. Does anyone else have anything they'd like to remove for separate discussion? Nope. Okay. With that, I'm going to ask the city clerk to read the items recommended for approval, please.
Five minutes for the November 24, 2020 Paducah Board of Commissioners meeting. Receive and file documents. Appointment of Mari McGarvey to the Board of Ethics to replace David Barnett, who has resigned. This term shall expire February 10, 2023. Personnel actions. A municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute an interlocal agreement for fire and rescue services between the city of Paducah, Kentucky, McCracken County, Kentucky, and the Paducah-McCracken County Office of Emergency Management to provide services related to fire and rescue services to and to respond to water emergencies. A municipal order authorizing and approving an agreement between the city of Paducah and Coa Hills Consulting for complex data conversion, systems integration, testing, and configuration related to the Tyler Technologies munis implementation in an amount of $95,200, and authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement. A municipal order authorizing and approving and approving an agreement between the city of Paducah and Retail Strategies LLC for retail economic development recruitment services, data and training in an amount of $40,000 per year for three years, and authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement. A municipal order adopting the Paducah-McCracken County Emergency Operations Plan and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to same.
I make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you. City clerk, will you call roll, please?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Oh, you're muted, Commissioner McElroy.
Aye.
Sorry. Commissioner Watkins? Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye. All right. And then, City Clerk, do you mind reading the item H that we removed from the consent agenda?
A municipal order authorizing and approving an agreement between the city of Paducah and the Paducah Convention and Visitors Bureau regarding Lou Hammond Group for marketing campaign services in an amount of $27,000, and authorizing the mayor to execute the agreement.
So moved?
Second.
Thank you. I had given the city manager heads up on this. He's been working really hard on finding community partners to help with this contract because there's a really special initiative that we think we have an opportunity to take on right now at this time in this place. And also, Mary Hammond, the director of the CVB, is on the call as well, who has worked very closely with Lou Hammond over the years. So, City Manager, do you mind just describing to us a little bit about those partnerships that you've been able to come together? And then, if you want to get a little get a little, we'll give a little quick overview of how you see the project unfolding, and then, Mary, if you want to jump on, I'd love to hear from you as well.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. No problem. This is a wonderful community project that the the city partnering with the CVB, basically just looking to see if we can generate some interest in some relocations from from some other municipal locations to Paducah area for to basically bring workers, you know, workers who could work remotely and people who don't have to live necessarily in a Chicago area or a high, you know, a Nashville area that can enjoy the quality of life and the cost of living in Paducah and still maintain their current employment, and really just a targeted campaign for that type of purpose. Knowing that this would be more valuable for just the city, we reached out to other community partners and the Chamber of Commerce, as well as Paducah Power, both agreed to put skin in the game, if you will. They both contributed $3,000 towards this project, so $6,000 towards $27,000. Also, had conversations with the the county to see if they'd be interested in that, and their deputy judge executive said they are interested, just had to kind of nail down a number of that type of thing, and trying to see if I can get them to match that 3,000. No pressure for them, but I'll put it out there publicly, trying to pressure them into it a little bit. But it'd be nice to see, and it's also nice to be able to promote Paducah as a team. You know, it's not just the city trying to attract others. It's the city, the CVB, Paducah Power, the Chamber of Commerce, and hopefully the county, working together as a as one body, saying, hey, come check out Paducah, come live here, reside here, and still keep your current job, come enjoy a quality of life at a reduced cost of living.
Thank you so much, City Manager. Mary, I saw you pop on video. Do you want to make some comments about this? I know you've been working with the team.
Yes, we have. And for us, this came about as during COVID, and marketing has changed. Everything's changed in our world, but and we still have really good communication with our visitors, potential visitors. We have really good interaction. A lot of it's online, but we saw that we were getting a lot of relocation inquiries because we weren't all working at the same time at the office. We weren't talking every day like we normally would. And then, when we got together and everyone spoke up and said they had had relocation inquiries, we've had them walk in the door and and they're calling and also sending an email through our website. So we've moved ahead with going having a landing page on our website, paducahtravel. It has been optimized, but Google is in the process of indexing it, so it's not popping up at the beginning when you do a search at this time. But it's a really a pretty good program of working with Lou Hammond. This is a time where traditional marketing is not working, but people are seeing that they don't have to work on go to the office. They can work remotely. They can work from anywhere. We are seeing that younger people who thought they might boomerang and come back to Paducah are coming back earlier than they thought they might because of the quality of life here. So visitors become residents, and I think this is a perfect way for us to work together. We have great luck with Lou Hammond Group. I hope all of you receive Paducah in the news. I'm always amazed at how many articles and lists and notifications that Lou Hammond Group is able to help us get in the media. So we're, I'm very pleased with the page. I will send you the link after this. It's a very curated page. We will work with the chamber. We've always had relocation inquiries, but it's never quite been as coordinated as we hope this will be. It does give us a chance to follow through, to check on referrals, to see what people are looking at, to analyze trends. Our customer relations module is very detailed and will allow us to to track. So thank you. I love this partnership.
Thank you, Mary. Does anyone have any questions or comments about this item?
Great overview.
Well, I'll just tell you, last week, I had two phone calls from young people that I know that don't live here, asking me how to find a house because they're talking to their bosses about working remotely from Paducah. So it is happening, and I don't think this is going to happen probably this intensely any other time. So now is the time, and I give kudos to Mary and to the city manager and to all to the chamber, to everyone who said, yes, let's jump on this and take this opportunity. So thank you all so much. If there are no other questions or comments, I'm going to ask the city clerk to call roll, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye. Hi, Commissioner Watkins. We're glad you made it.
Yes.
Oh, good.
You sound good.
Technical problems, goodness. Gee whiz.
But you're here, and you're you're crisp. You're crisp and clear, so we got you.
Good deal. Thank you. Glad to hear that.
Absolutely. Okay, well, next up, thank you. Thank you, Mary. Next up, we have a resolution that we I want to introduce tonight. This was the idea of several commissioners, and I think it was also Commissioner-elect Henderson who asked about whether we were going to be doing something at our city commission meeting. So thank you to him for bringing this up. We all know about the the passing of former Commissioner Coleman and his wife. And so tonight, we have a resolution that I would like to bring forward. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt a resolution entitled "A Resolution in Memory of Mr. Robert Coleman," whereas Robert Coleman served as a commissioner on the Paducah Board of Commissioners from 1974 to 1975, then again from 1978 to 1991, and again from 1994 to 2008. And whereas Mr. Coleman was Paducah's longest-serving elected official, having served a total of 31 years as city commissioner. serving elected official, having served a total of 31 years as city commissioner, and whereas Mr. Coleman brought a passion for equality and job accessibility to his role as city commissioner and will be remembered as a true example of leadership by both the African-American community and the City of Paducah as a whole. And whereas the many contributions Mr. Coleman made to the City of Paducah will live on, as his legacy and his accomplishments will continue to influence this community for years to come. And now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, on behalf of its citizens, offer their condolences to the family of Robert Coleman and express their gratitude for his commitment and leadership in our community.
Very nice.
I need a second, if you don't mind.
Second.
Second.
I want to ask that we get a copy of that available for Commissioner-elect Henderson. I think he wanted to have that to use when they're ready for services for Commissioner Coleman.
Oh, great. Thank you. Does anyone have any comments they'd like to make before we vote on this resolution?
I think it's a great resolution. Robert Coleman was my mentor, and he's the longest-serving local elected official in Paducah's history since 1827. And Paducah's a much better community for his having served us, and he had a servant's heart. He was a great gentleman, and he did an awful lot of good for the City of Paducah. And he is missed. Both he and his wife Connie have left a big empty spot in our hearts and in our community. But he's in a better place, and our community is better off because of his service.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right. I'm going to ask the city clerk to call roll, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye. All right. I'm going to ask the city clerk to read Item 3A, please.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance Providing For the Closing of Two Alleyes Extending West of Northview Street Onto the Paducah-McCracken County Joint Sewer Agency Property Located at 621 Northview Street," and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to same. This ordinance is summarized as follows: The City of Paducah does hereby authorize the closing of two alleys extending west of Northview Street onto the Paducah-McCracken County Joint Sewer Agency property located at 621 Northview Street and authorizes, empowers, and directs the mayor to execute a quitclaim deed for the city, from the city to the property owner, in or abutting the public ways to be closed.
So moved?
Second.
Thank you. We heard about this last meeting. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Murphy on this item? Okay, with that, I'll ask the city clerk to call roll, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye. All right. I'm going to ask the city clerk to call or to read for us Item 4A, please.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to introduce an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance Amending Ordinance Number 2020-6-H641, authorizing the City of Paducah to execute a forgivable loan agreement with Sprocket Incorporated in an amount of up to $900,000 to partially fund the construction cost of a renovated facility that will be used for the creation of new startup businesses and job opportunities within the City of Paducah, and to execute the other agreements and documents that are part thereof. This ordinance is summarized as follows: This ordinance authorizes the execution of a forgivable loan agreement with Sprocket Incorporated in an amount up to $900,000 for a portion of the construction cost systems and improvements of facilities at the Sprocket location, together with the loan guarantee agreement and other agreements, instruments, and certifications which may be necessary to accomplish said forgivable loan. Further, this ordinance authorizes the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2020, and ending June 30th, 2021, as adopted by Ordinance Number 2020-6-H641, be amended to transfer $900,000 from debt service undesignated fund balance 3,000 to general fund note receivable account 1,000-101055.
So moved?
Second.
Thank you. So, City Manager, your name is on this. Do you have anything you want to add before? We also have Dr. James Stapleton here from Codify, who will be partnering with Sprocket on this project, and then also Commissioner Jones from the Fiscal Court, who has also been supportive of this project, and they have funds that they're offering as well. City Manager, do you want to mention anything else before we jump into those?
No, Madam Mayor. You can lead the way with those, then I can provide some color context on the agreement itself, once they get them speaking.
Okay, that sounds great. Dr. Stapleton, oh, not Dr., Eddie Jones is going first. Sorry, I got those back mixed up. Commissioner Jones, welcome to the meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. And what a strong agenda you guys have with regard to economic development here at the end of this term. I congratulate you on that. Built fine, and then the IDA agreement next on your agenda, and then first the Codify. But I do want to mention, so that maybe I won't have to come back on the IDA agreement, I want to, well, I guess I just want everyone to know how hard Mayor Harless and Senator Wilson have worked on a subcommittee with I and Judge Clymer on, I guess, proposing and writing this new agreement that represents a city-county agreement with regard to how we're going to view and treat our joint industrial development authority. But first is Codify. And I'm excited to get the opportunity to work with each of you. And we've been doing this due diligence on this economic development investment for two years. The first, one of the first things Judge Clymer and I did after we took office is we took a trip on a cold snowy day to Cape Girardeau, where we met Dr. James Stapleton. Monica Belackin and Suzanne asked us to go and said, we need to see that space. And we went, and they were right. It was, so sometimes Codify gets called a business incubator, and I would call it, it's a business incubator on steroids. It was a truly interesting space, and it was a, I guess, a finished product that we saw in Cape Girardeau that Dr. James Stapleton had put together, which was the result of his rethinking space, space that is needed for that worker who wants to live in our city and work remotely, as you have already referenced in this meeting, that space that is needed for a new company that needs advanced technology, and that space that is needed for a future business that needs to feel confident that its future labor force with technology, training in technology is there and at the ready. And Codify fits that bill. Codify is not, in my opinion, just a program. Rather, Codify is an investment opportunity. You know, the city and county 10 years ago went together and invested each $9 million each in what we call the Triple Rail Site. And it's acres out by the train bridge and out by the High River. And I think everyone has always seen that. Well, that's a good investment. Has it produced a return yet? No, it hasn't. But we recognize that as an investment because there are potential businesses that need that space and need that space next to the rail and next to the river. So has it resulted yet in a return? No. But it's about a million dollars, and we did it together about a year ago. This is also about the same amount of money. And I submit to you that, I hope I don't sound like too much of a lawyer, that's my natural trade, but I believe that this investment, this space, can be, I guess, good analogy is, is this is kind of the water line and the sewer line that is needed for technology. This, without, so one of the things, I've kind of jumped ahead, is that Codify has the last year had a great year. It's received over a million dollars of grant money for training in technology. Well, one of the things they need, just like any other company, is they need span, space, both for that training and for the expansion that comes as a result of that training. So as we looked over the space that Dr. Stapleton, who you'll meet in just a minute, built in Cape Girardeau, it was obvious. It was just obvious. The right spot in Paducah for this is the former Coke plant. The plant that was 10 years ago was a vacant building, but now is becoming that place. I sometimes call it the Cathedral of Accidental Commerce. It's that place where many people are meeting and they are discussing business after they've done their business. And to be able to put that type of space in between a cool coffee bar and a cool place to eat pizza, Greg Dunker, I give you that. It's a place we sell, they eat pizza, but it's also a place that is a natural fit for commerce. I think it's the perfect place for this to be duplicated. And I guess I want to close, there's a video you're about to watch that explains Codify in a little more detail. But when I went to Dr. Stapleton's video introduction of Codify to our community, and I was there, I met two people. I walked in the room, and it was, you know, there were about 25 people in the room, and there were two people I didn't know, and that bothered me. So I wanted to know who they were. And I went up to introduce myself to them, and they were a commissioner from Carbondale and two commissioners from Carbondale, because they want to recruit Codify to their town as well. And I offer that as to say, you know, you have just a few opportunities to get ahead of the curve, and if you pause, guess what? You're either with the curve or you're behind the curve. And in this instance, we are ahead of the curve with regards to some of our competing cities. And I congratulate you on doing the due diligence on this. And I think there's a video, and I want to thank each of you for the time. You've tolerated me a little bit, and I appreciate that. So Steve, I'll let you take over with the video.
Are we going to get sound, Steve? Maybe the public is hearing it?
Yeah, maybe you're right. We're not hearing it.
Maybe he's going to try again.
So there's no audio coming through?
No.
All right, let's try this again. I think it's because it's throwing it out to a separate screen instead of inside the screen. You know, it's kind of a tricky little number to get it. See if we can grab it. Okay, let's try one more time. I'm going to back it up, and you all tell me real quick if it's working or not.
Okay. Yes.
We make it easy for people to discover, list, and book exciting and unique outdoor experiences online.
The name of the company is Absward. It helps the banks better understand the needs and issues of their small and medium-sized business clients.
Sports Traces AI Video Automation that Helps Coaches and Athletes Get Better.
We're a group of software-enabled payments consultants. We help any business find the best payment solution at the absolute best price.
For us, community has been a really important source of growth. And so to have that just to tap into here in our hometown has just been incredible.
I've had the opportunity to work around the world for Microsoft, and I've seen coworking spaces all across this country. And I can tell you unequivocally, the ones that I've been in, Codify is one of the best.
They are willing to make everything possible to make your successful business based here to grow the community and give back.
Yeah, we're constantly introduced to extremely talented individuals every single day. The very first person that they pass along, hire, like, that was easy for us.
I mean, we're definitely extremely appreciative to the Codify community, and I've just loved getting to know everybody.
The First 50K Team and the Codify Team in general have done countless introductions to try to make us successful in the area.
When you come here, you can get the support built by not their financial value, but by great people who want to make this city great.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chino. And just really quickly before, thank you, Commissioner Jones, for your comments and for being here tonight. And thank you to the city or the county and the library for their contributions as well. A couple of years ago, we all matched our original contribution, so thank you for that. Before I bring on Dr. Stapleton, I do want to make sure that it's clear that Sprocket is our local organization that is partnering with Codify to kind of unlock all that magic that Codify figured out in Cape Girardeau. So the code, you'll see the Sprocket agreement because that's our local organization who works very closely with Dr. Stapleton and Codify. So I want to make sure that that's clear. So with that, Dr. Stapleton, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor Harless. And I'm going to start my video here and hope that everyone can see me.
Yep.
Yeah. Good evening to everyone. And thank you to Commissioner Jones. You know, I'm not sure after his comments, there's a lot that I could really add. We've been working, as Eddie said, for years now, actually, prior to any formal engagements, we've been working probably four years with Monica and Mayor Harless, really to kind of look and see what the opportunities were like for us to take what we've done in the success of creating opportunities for high-wage, high-quality occupations in the digital economy, and to attract and create more of those types of companies in Cape Girardeau to McCracken County and to Paducah. Honestly, we've been at this work longer than that. You know, I've been working with rural communities up and down the Mississippi River for about 15 years. And, you know, maybe now with the pandemic, everything we've been through, coming up to the holiday season here, more than ever, I think we're all mindful of what it is as community leaders and business leaders that we can do to try to provide more and better opportunities for the people we serve to improve the quality of their lives. And oftentimes, that links to an occupation. So the short story about Codify and what we've been doing, which started in Cape Girardeau and has manifested itself into rural regions and other parts of the country, is really, as the mayor said, unlocking the potential of the digital economy in places where frankly, it's not been something we've made that many efforts at trying to do. I think all of us know the digital companies, the digital economy's really growing growth. And that's not just true in Western Kentucky or in the central part of the country. It's domestic U.S. economy globally. And we've been kind of, those of us choosing to live in great places like Paducah, but kind of on the outside looking into that. I often use the analogy, if we just want to think about it historically, if we were in these same places, I suspect we wouldn't have these earbuds in our ears, and we wouldn't be connected video. And poor Commissioner Watkins tried to get connected. But if we were here 30 years ago having this conversation, we'd be talking about now being a really good time to think about starting to recruit industrial companies, manufacturing companies into our communities. And we'd be doing it for the same reason, because we want to try to provide more resilient, high-quality occupations for the people that live in our communities. In many unique ways that I wouldn't have time to address tonight, we, the digital economy really provides that opportunity. The model that we've developed over the six years we've been doing this in Cape Girardeau really works with partners like Sprocket and with the community leaders that are participating in this project to kind of pair up the demand that comes from companies, some of which you have, that are longstanding companies in your community, trying to drive more demand for the skills that those types of companies need by attracting more of them, by helping local companies grow in digital ways, and then also providing the trained skills for the technical talent that they need. And we're happy to be able to begin to work now on having the same kind of success we've had here. Those jobs, uh, that people are, are being trained for, and you'll learn a lot more about this in the coming months, uh, are the same kinds of occupation quality jobs that we prided ourselves on providing 30 years ago in the industrial economy. The kinds of jobs that we built our middle class on in this country. And, and I think this is the best opportunity we've had in decades, uh, to start that reclamation process. We work with partners like Sprocket to make sure that there's access to everyone, uh, to these kinds of opportunities. And, and I, I'm proud to be a part of what we've started in Paducah. This space is a critical part of that model. So we need to provide more opportunities to attract companies. As Commissioner, uh, said earlier, uh, we, we need to provide opportunities for people who are working for local companies or, or companies like Microsoft, which you heard about in the, in the video, for a place for them to call home in Paducah where they, they might want to live. And, and so this space is, is critical. Um, the last thing, Mayor, I'd say about that space, when we started in Cape Girardeau, we didn't have a place like that. I mean, there, there wasn't a building that had these amazing qualities that were already, um, so far along in its development that we could plug into. And, and it was a giant undertaking to create, uh, what Eddie and others have seen over here. Uh, the unique thing that you have before you as a community is, uh, that space really just needs now the sort of, uh, energy that we can provide, uh, with this digital economy piece. Uh, it's gonna help obviously promote the previous investments in the space that have been made, but it's, it's really perfectly situated. So, so, um, I'm pleased to be a part of it. Uh, I'm happy to answer questions about our role in it. I think, uh, brighter days, uh, certainly continue to be ahead, uh, for Paducah in this way. And I, I agree with, uh, Commissioner Jones. I commend you, uh, Mayor, for, uh, the work that you and, and the current commission have done. It, it takes, it takes a lot of time. And I think the public doesn't understand this always to look through the things that, that are available and the opportunities, uh, that present them to communities to try to provide better opportunities. And, um, I don't even know how we would have counted all the hours that you and others have spent, uh, in, in looking at this and working on getting it to this place. So it's timely now, uh, that you have this opportunity to, to make another investment, to, to kind of really, uh, get this thing going even, even more so than it has been. So thanks for the opportunity, um, uh, this evening, and, and I'll, uh, be, be happy to answer any questions I can.
Well, thank you, Dr. Stapleton, for being here. Um, we are going to, I'm assuming, get into the nuts and bolts of the agreement and have that discussion. Uh, before we do that, does anyone have any specific questions for Dr. Stapleton about that model? Um, that we're looking to replicate here in Paducah with Sprocket? Any specific questions for him?
I just have a comment.
Oh, Commissioner Wilson and then Commissioner Watkins, how about that?
I just have a comment. I think it's been maybe almost two years since Commissioner McElroy and I made that trip over to Cape Girardeau to see the Codify building and, um, and what you were doing there inside of a, a renovated building. And it was so impressive. We talked about it all the way. I think it was pouring down rain that, that we went and, and cold, maybe it's snowing. But it's been almost two years. And so I'm glad to be getting finally to the end of this, hoping to make that work. We had a lot of things we had to work through. And, um, so thank you for that day, the tour that we got to meet you then and for being with us and all.
She's frozen now. Okay. We lost you for just a second, Commissioner Wilson. You're back.
Okay.
I heard you say thank you.
End up with that.
Thank you. All right. Great. And Commissioner Watkins, did you have a question or a comment?
Well, just a comment. Well, kind of both. Uh, thank you, Mayor. Dr. Stapleton, thanks for joining us. Thanks for the hard work you've done and, and we appreciate your efforts to want to, uh, duplicate those efforts in Paducah and McCracken County. I'm trying to remember, uh, the success you've had. It seems like it's been over in Cape, 200 jobs created and 30 plus million dollars in private investment. That, that's impressive. Is that, are those numbers accurate?
Yes, sir. Uh, Commissioner Watkins, we, uh, the, one of the things that happens in spaces like this is, is that, uh, you know, over the 15 years, we've, we've been sort of analyzing, uh, what happens, uh, you know, prior to this or normally in, in metropolitan areas. Uh, we have to do a, a lot of things at once. So this, the conversations that go on around, uh, uh, you know, these fancy terms like ecosystem and things like that. Uh, I think Commissioner, uh, Jones said it earlier. It's kind of, we have to put an infrastructure in place where there are a lot of programs and activities happening and they have to have a home and a space. And when you start to, um, sort of summate the impact of those, yes, uh, those kinds of jobs, um, the kinds of, uh, new companies that get established. And as the video showed, uh, the kinds of companies that you can attract. And, you know, that's one of the things that I'll be honest, uh, excites me the most as, as someone who's always lived his life in, in small places like Paducah. Um, this is kind of a new opportunity. I don't want to for a minute celebrate anything about COVID, but if one of the outcomes of this, uh, darn timeframe is, is that, uh, rural communities start to see a little bit of a reverse of things that started so long ago with the outmigration. Well, now's the time. And, and those companies that you saw on that video are companies that, um, used to be in San Francisco. They used to be in St. Louis. They used to be, uh, in Oregon. Um, and they've chosen to be in, in Cape Girardeau. And they're gonna choose to be in Paducah. And for all the reasons that all of us on, on this presentation, uh, live in the communities we live in, well, those are values that they have as well. And prior to now, they just didn't think that was possible. So by having these spaces where all these things come together, by having the programs that help assist those companies, by having programs that help train people that can work for those companies to make sure they have the workforce that they need. There's no question, uh, as you see from those companies and, and, uh, some of you I know met, uh, some of those founders, uh, because we sort of traveled them over to Paducah and, and gave you a chance to spend some time with them. Um, they, they talk so passionately about how much more they can focus, how much, uh, more beneficial the cost of doing businesses and, in our communities. And so those kinds of jobs, those kinds of businesses that get created are, are absolutely the kinds of results, uh, over that same timeframe we expect to have in, in Paducah, if not more. Because frankly, uh, one of the great things in working with Sprocket and, and the rest of your group, uh, in Paducah is we're, we're taking some of the hard knocks, uh, that we had over six years of learning. And we're able to put those into, uh, uh, into action over there very quickly. And, and so we're excited about that.
Well, we appreciate your efforts, hard work and, and desire to, uh, see those kind of results in Paducah. And, uh, we, we support you a hundred percent.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I think it was you, Commissioner Wilson, who said, you know, we have commerce parks, we have industrial parks. This is kind of a technology park. We're, we're putting the infrastructure down for these companies that aren't brick and mortar, yet they do need some brick and mortar space. And, uh, they've got the technology, they've got the training. But I remember in Cape, the beautiful conference rooms, the coffee bars, it was all very impressive, a place where, uh, we are so tired of meeting by Zoom. I think that companies are gonna be excited to get to meet together and actually get into a conference room together again. But it provides those small companies that can have those kind of business facilities on their own and don't really need them. They may just need them twice a month or twice a week, but they're there in the facility. Uh, that was super impressive. And as you so beautifully stated, now is the time. Uh, and as I think the mayor said, never has there been greater opportunity to attract people to our area who are perhaps a little concerned about living in such close proximity all the time and do share our values and, uh, the beautiful, um, uh, lifestyle that we have. And I would say Cape is awesome. I went to school there. I love it. But Paducah's awesome too. And we have the lakes. So anyway, um, it's, it's a, it's a very exciting opportunity for us. And I do think as this pandemic continues on and people are getting weary, they're getting a little bit more restless. And this might be the exact time for them to, uh, be attracted to something like this. Hey, what's Paducah doing? I've got some contacts there. I'll make a contact there. Uh, there, the, uh, the new PR campaign might touch on them and, and this might all work together beautifully. It's very exciting.
I'm here. The, um, uh, presentation, uh, by Doctor, it was, it was great. I'm a fan of Paducah. I couldn't, I couldn't imagine a better place for someone to relocate, for businesses to, uh, uh, to spring forth from here. The, the only concern I have, nothing about, um, the, uh, uh, Codify, that the video, I watched the video, uh, some time ago and it, and it was awesome. I mean, it, it totally get you fired up. This, my concern is more on a municipal side with, uh, with the amount of funding, uh, given the, the, uh, the pension situation that we have. I, I'm, I'm looking at what, what we're, what we're, the $900,000. And, and I'm thinking, is that, given the report that came out today regarding the pension, is, is there any way that we can totally support this and maybe at, uh, a lesser amount? And then that amount being made up by some of the partners that we have that are just as enthusiastic about the opportunity to relocate those guys here. So that's, that's my concern. I think I would be remiss if I didn't, if I didn't bring that up, given the fact that the, uh, that, that data came out this afternoon, even though we had kind of, we had our guys put their heads together, uh, a while back, trying to guesstimate what that amount of money would be. And they were pretty spot on, 850,000 to $900,000. And, and it came out today right at 900,000. So that's, that's my concern, not about the project. The project is hands down great. That's, uh, as elected official though, that I think I would be remiss if I didn't talk about, uh, the amount of the full amount of that $900,000.
I think I, I could just add in on that from the economic development side of it. We are setting, we have set aside the proceeds from another economic development project. So to me, this is economic development. We've talked a lot about we have to grow, how we have to grow our community. And these are major league projects that we are participating in to try to do that. The, the marketing, um, for new professionals, the building of the technology park. I mean, that's not exactly what we're doing, but we've talked about how the infrastructure allows for that. If we were building an industrial park to recruit jobs here, we'd all be ready to have a ribbon cutting tomorrow. It's a different concept to be building this. And we have known we were gonna have that pension funds, uh, pension obligation coming. And I believe, you know, when we had budget meetings this year, we didn't know we were gonna have the proceeds from a current economic development project. And we were planning ahead at that point on how we were gonna pay for that pension. So that is still in play. This is money that came to the city from the sale of another successful economic development. Look at how we can reinvest that in economic development. And this is a proven way to do that.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson and Commissioner Abraham. Um, anyone have any questions? Or even further comments they would like to discuss tonight? I know, uh, you've probably all seen by now the actual agreement. Just a reminder, you know, this is a forgivable loan. So this has a lot of accountability baked into it. Um, there are metrics required for, uh, jobs and startups every year for Sprocket to, uh, meet in order to get the reduction of that loan. Um, and then also, um, the muscle men's are guaranteeing this. Uh, if, if this were to not work, they are signing their name on the dotted line, saying, we will take this obligation over um, and take on that liability. So I think from a, a city protection perspective, um, Tom Quiller put this together. I told him on the phone, I was so impressed with how he was able to pull this together. Uh, he has done banking, um, uh, legal work for decades. And so he applied all that knowledge to here to make sure the city is protected. So, uh, any, any other comments or questions about the agreement? I want to make sure we answer any of those. And another city manager has been working on this, um, as well. So Jim, if you have anything to add, please jump in here also.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll just echo what you said. We put a lot of work in this agreement. Really what came to mind for me is partnerships. You know, we've worked with, uh, uh, Sprocket, with, uh, Suzanne primarily, of course yourself, and then Monica, and worked with Tom, and of course, uh, the muscle men's, the property owners. Uh, really just a partnership. Anything that we asked to secure this loan, uh, they've graciously said, yes, we'll do it. Uh, you know, uh, they understand the importance. This is, uh, these are public dollars being spent. We've got to make sure we're caretakers of the public dollar and, uh, making sure this is a wise investment for the city. Investing in jobs, investing in startup companies, which is a great thing for economic development purposes. So this, just the partnership was really impressive to me. Uh, you know, we're looking at the, uh, just the, the nuts and bolts of this. We're looking at creating that space that Dr. Stapleton, Stapleton talked about, you know, having that space here, uh, to really generate these jobs, generate the, uh, the new startup companies and really just, uh, making it possible. And then the, uh, the, the metrics we have in there, the benchmarks we have set aside, really saying, you know, it's basically, if you make it, part, part of it's being forgiven. And they have basically four different benchmarks. And if they make the first one, they get a 15% forgiveness. Make the second one, they get another 15% forgiveness. They make the third one, another 15% forgiveness. They make all four, they get 75% forgiveness. So really the money, uh, that we give out to them, it's not a grant, it's a loan, partially forgiven. And, uh, there's a, there's actually an interest put into this. So looking at economic develops, development deals that I've done over my 17 years of doing this, this is one of the, the best city ran deals I've ever seen, where it's actually guaranteed. And it's acted by, by the property owner. It's a loan, not a grant. And it's basically money we're gonna give to them and we're gonna get back over time. So this is a really good deal for the city as far as for economic development purposes. And I give just the hands off, as you said, to, uh, Tom for putting this together. Uh, he really did a great job with this. I know we've kind of lived this for like four straight days. I think I dream about this at night. So a lot of the stuff is ingrained. So if people, if you guys, you guys have any specific questions about the agreement, uh, I'm here to answer those questions.
So city manager, uh, your recommendation is that we move forward with this as is?
My recommendation is, is it is a good deal for economic development purposes, but I share your concerns, Commissioner Abraham, about the amount of money and the financial conditions. Uh, I would just say that, that the decision to move forward will be up to this body.
And I, let's, let's do the math for a second. Commissioner Abraham, I heard you say, you know, an idea of, um, maybe reducing the amount. If we, I was just doing the math as you said that actually. So if everything happens the way that the agreement is laying out, even if it doesn't happen frankly, because the muscle men's are going to guarantee this. So we are actually providing $675,000 to this project. If you look at this on the long term, right? Because 25% of 900,000 is 225,000. So that, we're recovering 225,000 plus interest. And I'm not smart enough to calculate that over time and, and come up with that table. So it's $225,000 plus interest. And then don't forget that in order for them to get to the $225,000 balance on their loan, they have to have created, I think it's 59 jobs. So let's just imagine that that's 59 jobs times, I don't know, make a range, 60,000, $100,000 a year. Now you're talking about payroll taxes back to the city. So when it comes to recouping this, this funds that we're talking about, I think we're, we're recovering quite a bit of it. I also wanted to mention to you that I think this is so crazy that we're also talking about the IDA agreement tonight. Um, because part of the benefit of us doing that is actually, uh, wrote, actually getting back some of the revenue that we've been sharing with the county from things like the commerce park in our revenue sharing agreements. So in February of 2021, that agreement expires. It's been in place for 20 years. We've been sharing revenue for a long time. And there is, um, a, a couple hundred thousand dollars that will be recovered, uh, from, to the city. And then in March of 2022, another agreement expires and the same thing will happen. We will start to see those revenues come back to the city that we've been sharing with the county from, from former economic development deals. So when you start to put the math together on making up that pension, um, you, very quickly it adds up. But I think we're setting ourselves up for success here, uh, with the two things that we're talking about, IDA and the Sprocket deal. So that's my perspective and the kind of number crunching I've been doing since I got that email today about the CRS. Any other comments, questions, conversation you want to have about this tonight? No? Okay. Well, thank you all so much. Thanks again, Dr. Stapleton and Commissioner Jones. It was good to see you all. Uh, and thanks Suzanne and Monica for being on. Um, we're gonna move on to the next item on the agenda. And I gotta pull it back up over here. Uh, and City Clerk, would you? And city clerk, would you read item 4B, please?
Proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to introduce an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, approving and authorizing the execution of an interlocal cooperative agreement among the City of Paducah, Kentucky, the County of McCracken, Kentucky, the Paducah-McCracken County Industrial Development Authority, and the Greater Paducah Economic Development Council, and authorizing the execution of a forgiveness of debt agreement between the City of Paducah, Kentucky and Greater Paducah Economic Development Council pursuant to the terms of said interlocal agreement. This ordinance authorizes the execution of an interlocal cooperative agreement to make the Paducah-McCracken County Industrial Development Authority, IDA, the owner of certain publicly owned development sites within the Paducah-McCracken County, including the Ohio River, the Ohio River Triple Rail Mega Site, formerly known as Port West, which is currently owned by the Greater Paducah Economic Development Council, and to effect repositioning of the Paducah-McCracken County Industrial Development Authority and its role with regard to property ownership, maintenance, development, marketing, and management. Further, this ordinance authorizes a forgiveness of debt agreement with the Greater Paducah Economic Development in a total amount of 911,375 dollars related to the Ohio River Triple Rail Mega Site.
So moved?
Second.
Thank you. City manager, would you like to give us an overview of this and then we can open up for questions?
Yeah, I sure will, Madam Mayor. And Commissioner Jones from the county kind of mentioned this before as well. And you alluded to it this last conversation. This is another major economic development project here that we're wrapping up here at the end of the calendar year. This is an agreement with, as the clerk just mentioned, multiple partners in the community, GPED, the IDA, the county and the city. This is actually brought to us by the county several months ago. And we've had numerous meetings with the county trying to work through what this looks like. Really trying to take GPED and have them focus on being that job generator, that recruiter, that marketing arm for economic development, and then utilizing the IDA to be our property manager. You know, trying to take that, split that rollout from GPED where the IDA can maintain and care take the properties. They can handle the maintenance issues. They can handle where signs go. They can handle the lawn mowing. They can handle the median out there at Commerce Park, that type of thing. But then the idea becomes, well, where do they get the money to do that? And this agreement kind of sets that up where the, as you mentioned, Madam Mayor, the, the revenue sharing agreements with the county are set to expire. One in 2021 here in February, just a few months away. The other one in 2022 in March. So those monies will no longer be going split between the city and the county. But what this does is kind of put a replacement out there where the county takes money they get from the TVA, their tax money from the TVA, used for industrial development purposes. They're going to dedicate that to the IDA. And then what this agreement says is the city will match those funds. So in the first year, calendar year 2021, that's not currently in our fiscal year budget. But what I'm trying to find out from John is, is that was there any overlap there that we projected to go to the county that we can kind of divert to this? Otherwise, we'll have to tap into some of those monies that remain unspent from the Genova proceeds. Again, as Commissioner Wilson talked about, for economic development purposes. So that money will go to the IDA, will match this, per this agreement. That'll be a 10-year match with the, the county. Whatever they get in from the TVA, we're going to match that up to capping at 250,000 dollars. In addition to that, as the clerk mentioned, this agreement has that forgiveness of the loan out there for the improvements and the acquisition of the triple rail site. So basically, we forgive the loan to GPED. The county's going to do the same. You might, you might notice inside the agreement, those numbers are a little bit different. The city's has doubled the county's forgiveness. That's not because it's being unfair. The county already forgave half of their loan. We actually had originally matched the same amount and the city still has not forgiven any of it. So we'll be forgiving the whole amount. The county will be forgiving the half that remains. So we're equal in that, those regards as well. So we, and also in addition to that, this agreement puts forth a kind of a separate thing. It's still a type of revenue sharing, but instead of the city giving the money to the county or the county giving money to the city, the city and county are both agreeing that we will do 10% revenue sharing from those payroll taxes with the IDA. So not 50% as it is now for the county. It's going to be 10%. So if a project happens in the county, the county will take 10% of those, those payroll taxes and give it to the IDA so they can perform their duties. If it happens in the city, the city will take 10% and give it to the IDA for the, for the performance of those, of their duties. You might notice on there that it doesn't, that portion of it doesn't sunset. So basically, that's going to be something that's going to continue. So that's supposed to last for 10 years. So if a business comes to town inside the city limits, and we're agreeing to give the IDA 10% of those payroll taxes for that business for a 10-year period. But they're going to need that to operate. So I hope I captured it all, but Mr. Wilson, Mayor Harless, you've been involved with those meetings as well. Anything to add?
Well, I will say, Commissioner McElroy and I serve on the GPED Government Affairs Committee. And one of the things that we did hear from some of them was the importance of this interlocal agreement. And because of those expiring contracts. And it, and it was very important to the county. And I hope, I see that Commissioner Jones is still on the call. He was very instrumental in developing all of this agreement as well about how that we could work together more. And this does give GPED the opportunity to be more involved, hopefully in recruiting, which is what we've been talking about tonight. Tonight is an economic development night. Honestly, it's all kind of come down here to this month for us to be doing this. But this is just the way it's fallen because everything's been working on for quite some time. The land, the forgivable loan that we have, that was definitely a partnership between the city and county because all of this land is in the county and it's not anywhere near the city. It's, it's way out in the county, but it's a beautiful site that has a lot of potential. It's a mega site. It's one of the, it's got to have the right marketing. It's got to have the right person, company to come along. And I, I believe that will happen and it will be a game changer for our community when that does happen. And so the city stepped in a couple of mayors ago with the county to make that happen, to buy that land and to, to secure it up. I remember being in meetings when they were talking about taking down land to make, to create this site. And so GPED hasn't, you know, we've had this forgivable loan. I think it just helps to clear off their books and to make them more whole. And it definitely creates a stronger partnership, in my opinion, between the city and the county in economic development.
Yeah. And does it not also help us to be more ready when a company comes?
Yes.
And I think that's really important. If you've got everything lined up and it's easy for them to come in, that's helpful. If it's who owns this land, who owns that, you know, and the county, the city? I mean, that's just a lot of extra stuff for a big company coming in. So it makes us get ready and be ready. And I think that's really important.
I'm really glad you said that, Commissioner McElroy, because I'll be honest with you. I forgot that that was the whole point of this conversation getting started. We've been so far in the weeds on trying to make it happen. This thing, this all started back in the spring, right before COVID, when we had a prospect that was looking here, got really serious. And we were talking about how do we get competitive? And one of the things that everyone recognized was if you were a company coming in and looking at this site or any other site, it was really hard to figure out who to talk to. And so that whole idea of putting everything under one bucket to make sure that there's one entity that everybody knows you call. And let's just get really clear, site selectors and businesses know that IDAs own land. So it becomes very obvious to prospects as well. So thanks for reminding me of that. We've been so far. I really forgot. I knew it was a good thing, but I now remember exactly what kicked all this off. So thank you for that.
Well, I think it's a great idea and I fully support it. It allows GPED to do what they're supposed to be doing and it has been mentioned. And that is go out and recruit employers and bring them in and also to help grow our local businesses, but mostly to bring in new employers. And so they can concentrate their time on doing that in this very competitive environment and use their time more wisely to help make Paducah more attractive and try to entice and land some, some business prospects here without having to spend the time and deal with all the property that they currently own.
I'm going to just say, in today's paper and then in last week, at the chamber breakfast, Bruce Wilcox with GPED spoke and he talked about the success that they've had in the past year. So to me, this is just the next move to set him up for even more success. And he will continue the economic development in the, well, in all areas, but in that area in particular. I think we're setting up the codified Sprocket for the high tech. And now here's this opportunity for other sites for manufacturing, logistics, whatever, that would fit into that part.
I agree.
Well, I hope this is, this is the last piece of that triple rail mega site. Because I've been on a commission for a long time in that area. It was always, it was always something. You had the property out there, but it, it was in, it was kind of pieced together. And so that was, that was a conversation. Can we all get it, get it all together so that when someone comes in and they're talking about it, this, you talk to one person, not having to get five or six people at the table. So prayerfully, this will, this will be the, the piece to put it together. And that's a lot, there's a lot of land out there. So that's stuff.
I think it's important when you say the triple rail site to remember it's served by three rails and it's on the river, the beautiful piece of flatland that could be, that can be utilized. So this is bringing it all together. Thank you, Commissioner Abraham, for saying that. That is true. We've been working on it a long time. This is maybe hopefully the final piece. But then the road, we'll, we'll work on transportation.
Any other questions or comments about this item tonight? No? Okay. Thank you all. I'm going to ask the city clerk if we can, if she'll read item 4C for us, please.
Proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to introduce an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance Amending Chapter 2 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance amends the Paducah Code of Ordinances, Section 2-562 through 2-564, to change the composition of the Paducah Industrial Development Authority from six to seven members and allow for the appointment of members in a manner described by the Interlocal Cooperation Agreement as established by the City of Paducah, McCracken County, the Paducah Industrial Development Authority, and the Greater Paducah Economic Development Council. Further, this ordinance removes the restriction that members cannot hold any office, official office in the city or county, and brings the terms of the members in line with said interlocal cooperation agreement.
So moved?
Second.
Thank you. City manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is another part of the agreement we just talked about. This is actually putting, aligning our ordinance that we have on the books for the, with the consistency of the IDA, what we say it can be to align with that agreement. So the, most notably, this ordinance allows the mayor and the judge executive to be members of the IDA board. Prior to this, they were prohibited. So this changes it to, makes it allowable. Interesting enough, the way we structured the agreement is that the mayor of Paducah will serve two years as the chair. And then the, maybe not in this particular order, but the, the judge executive would, will spend two years as the chair. And they'll rotate every two years. But I think it's fantastic. Goes back to what Commissioner Wilson said, again, another way for the county and the city to work jointly together.
In the past, why, why was it not looked favorably as far as a mayor and a judge executive?
That's a great contextual question, Commissioner Abraham. I don't know the answer for it. It's been that way for a long time. It's not, it's not prohibited by the Kentucky Revice Statute. It was a local decision.
Okay, all right.
I would say years, years and years ago, I did serve as a chair of that board. And I, it was, they were, did serve as ex officio. This makes them voting members of it and gives them more lead, a more leadership role. But they, they did come to many of our meetings in an ex officio role.
Any other questions? Comments? Great. Okay, thank you. We're going to move into comments. City manager, do you have comments tonight?
I do. I was kind of blown away Saturday night, sitting there relaxing. And then I got this text message from Mark Thompson. And he was just ecstatic. We had more than 1,000 vehicles participate in the reverse Christmas parade Saturday night. More than 1,000.
Wow.
He said it was backed up down Cairo Road. The police had to get involved a few different times for traffic control. And the thing that was interesting was, we talked about it, just in passing during a leadership team meeting about what, what if it's bigger than we thought it's going to be? Is it going to cause traffic problems? And then we quickly moved on. Should have got to. So yes, but we handled it. We did get some, I know Mark was getting some phone calls from some of his people in the community that he knows saying, hey, I've been sitting in line for an hour, you know, to go through that. But they went through, they stayed in line. They went through the, the reverse parade. It was a great way to celebrate Christmas, COVID-19 style, if you will. But just shows you the amazing creativity that our Parks team had. You know, Molly and Kelsey and Amy and Mark putting this together. Mark told me that he would have been happy to get 200. They expected maybe 60. They got more than 1,000.
Wow.
So just shows you there's a hunger for, to celebrate Christmas this year.
Yeah. Wonder why that is?
I had a text, Jim, and from my daughter-in-law who said, are you going through the parade? And I said, well, I'm still in Murray. I was leaving the Murray State game. I said, I'm still in Murray, but I'm planning to. She said, well, you're probably not going to make it then. And so when I got back to Paducah, I did go down Park Avenue and they were light up, way down Park Avenue. So it was a great response. Congratulations. Thank you to our team.
They did a good job, real good job.
Absolutely. That's great. Any comments from the commissioners tonight? We do have two public comments signed up tonight. I'll have George Bray, may I let George Bray go first, if you'd like to?
Okay, I'm unmuted. And...
There you are.
Yep.
There you are.
Can everybody see me?
We can.
Okay, great. Good evening, everybody. Mayor, commissioners, guests. I appreciate the opportunity. I just wanted to weigh in on the proposed forgivable, forgivable loan to Sprocket. It is 900,000 dollars. And as the incoming mayor, you know, I, I just wanted to make a couple of comments. I have reviewed the agreement between the city and Sprocket in detail with, with Jim, the city manager, and provided some input on points that I think would help us manage the agreement and, and protect the city in the long run. So I appreciate that, that opportunity to do that. We do need entrepreneurial growth and economic development in Paducah. And I certainly support what we are attempting to accomplish here. As the new mayor, and without a feel about the timing of city tax revenues, I definitely have been concerned about spending the money now. For sure, our tax revenues will be reduced as a result of COVID. We just really don't know how much. However, this commission has worked with Sprocket for over two years and believe that this agreement will spur economic development. And as mayor, I will be charged to ensure that the city maximizes the return on that investment. I would just remind all of us that there remain significant needs in our community. To name just a few, improve stormwater infrastructure. The city's looking at a major outlay for a new 911 system. And of course, the city's share of the new airport terminal, which is a major economic development play in itself. And I'm sure that there's an ask coming to support the county on the new outdoor sports park. So there's plenty out there. The prioritization, prioritization of, and the approach to projects is, is a big reason why I was elected mayor. So going forward, I will do everything in my power to ensure that the commission will be laser focused on prioritizing needs as well as the timing around these, these projects that we put in place to address those needs. Thanks for the opportunity to make some comments. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you. I think I actually sent you a text message today and let you know that every, I think it was three comments or three concerns I had emailed to me about the agreement that you shared. So just know that all of those... So just know that all of those were incorporated into the agreement as well. So thank you for your input on that. I appreciate that.
Thank you for listening.
Absolutely. Okay, next up, we have Kimton Baldrich, who signed up for public comment tonight. Is he with us?
I don't believe so. I have not seen, I have not seen join.
Okay.
No.
Okay, all right. Well, with that, I do think we have, are we going into executive session? We are. Okay, great. City Clerk, do you mind reading that for us?
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to go into closed session for discussion of matters pertaining to the following topics: future sale or acquisition of a specific parcel of real estate as permitted by KRS 61.8101B.
So moved?
Second.
Thank you. Leave me hanging over here. City Clerk, will you call roll, please?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner McElroy?
Aye.
Commissioner Watkins?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Harless?
Aye.
All right, I think we're going to go into the time warp now. And we'll come back out to adjourn.
That's what I was going to ask. Okay, so you're coming back out to adjourn?
Yes.
All righty, I'm going to put you into a breakout room.
Thank you.